I'd like to call the order of the City of Sagatuck's City Council Workshop for Wednesday, October 9th. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Anderson?
Here.
Baldwin?
Here.
Dean?
Here.
Gardner?
Lenzi?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Eva Corr.
Councilmember Gardner said he's running late. He caught some construction on his way here, so he'll be joining us shortly. As far as agenda changes, I am asking if we can move item C up to discussion item B.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Make a motion to move discussion item C after A.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say yes.
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 Great, thank you. Any guest speakers today? All right, we'll move on to public comment on agenda items only. This is for our workshop. If you have any comments on agenda items, anyone in the room wish to come to the podium? All right, so, yeah, please come on up.
Township Parks and Rec. If you have any questions, I've been here numerous times, but if any questions pop up, I still have the facts and figures, so.
Sounds great. Thanks so much. Anyone else in the room? All right, we'll go online. I see Chris Peterson has her hand raised. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Chris Peterson.
Chris, for some reason, we can't hear you. Can you hold on one second? We're going to try to adjust the volume. And can you adjust maybe the volume on your end?
The test shows it's as high as it will go. Can you hear me at all?
We can hear you, but it's very, very faint.
I'll have to go ahead. I'll just speak as loudly as I can. This is on action item B, which has now moved down to C, and I'm going to talk on both of them. The first one will be B.
I'm sorry, no one can hear you, Chris. I'm sorry.
Dial in, is there a dial-in number she could do with the phone?
Chris, do you know how to do that, to be able to dial in by phone?
My volume maybe is down on her computer?
Yeah, try the volume on your computer.
You could give her the number on the meeting agenda if she wants to try that.
Chris, the phone number that you can call if you wanted to join by phone, 312-626-6799.
She's got the agenda in front of her.
Okay, she does. Okay, good.
Okay. Chris, do you want to try that, or do you want to wait till the end? Chris, if you don't, are you still there? You want to just wait till the end, and maybe you can work on that while we move ahead?
I, I am on the phone. Hang on.
She's dialing.
Okay, and then maybe Jamie can.
Admit her, yeah.
Admit her if she ends up in.
Anybody else want to entertain us?
No, I don't see any other hands raised in the meantime. Do you see any calling, Jamie? Chris, we don't see you calling in.
Okay. I'll have to wait.
I feel like we should move on, and then maybe you can try to comment at the end, after our discussion items? Okay, is everybody good with that? All right, Chris, we're going to move on, but we hope to, oh, yeah, then she can come in person, maybe. Okay. All right, we'll move on then. I don't see anyone else's hands raised, so we'll move on to our discussion items for today. Item 6A, the water and sewer rate studies. It's on page two in your packet. Ryan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. So, last year, the council approved an agreement with Baker Tilly to work with Andy Campbell, who was a water and sewer rates expert amongst many other things. But, so Andy was with Baker Tilly, helped develop some water infrastructure recommendations, as far as, you know, what kind of fee should we be charging to kind of plan for our future replacement needs that we have for water mains and lead service lines? And so, earlier this year, you actually implemented some of his recommendations along those lines. So since that time, we've continued to work on negotiating with Cal Lake and an updated water agreement. As part of that process, and kind of what's being recommended, at least from Mr. Campbell, is kind of a different way of accounting for repairs. And so, we're anticipating that we're going to need to have some, a review at least of those charges to determine that, or make a determination whether or not we're raising enough dollars to make sure that we're repairing our water infrastructure, as well as planning for future replacement as well. Along those lines, we're anticipating that some of the assets that we currently have as local asset, just as our water storage reservoir and water main that runs under the river are likely going to kind of transfer to Cal Lake and be kind of a common asset of the utility. So that's going to kind of affect the long-term planning as well. So, we kind of need another look at our water infrastructure charges. And then on the sewer side of things, we're kind of in the same boat. We don't have any sewer-related infrastructure charge on the bills right now to plan for future sewer repairs or replacement work that's ultimately going to be necessary. And so, I think it's a good idea to kind of take a look at this sewer side. What are our capital needs, you know, in the next several years? And then come up with a funding mechanism to try to start saving some dollars towards that eventual replacement and repair costs. The other piece that's kind of key here is that our connection fees for both water and sewer haven't been updated since 1996, so I think we're due for a kind of a fresh look at that to determine what those connection fees should look like as well. So, Mr. Campbell's essentially put forth a proposal that would be for $10,500 for updated water study essentially, and then the same for sewer. Now, the key to this is that Baker Tilly hasn't charged us at all for the work that Andy did last year, because from Andy's perspective, that project wasn't necessarily complete. So we're really paying him for the time that he's already spent, you know, working for us, and then obviously some updates to the water side. Obviously, the sewer side are newer charges. But effectively, you know, the water side is really at no price increase, and Andy's indicated that if there's, you know, if we do receive a bill from Baker Tilly, that he'll reduce the fee a proportion about, so it's still the same. So, Andy's with us today. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, any questions from council? Go ahead, Russ.
Madam Mayor, good afternoon. Sorry for arriving late. So just to make sure I understand, maybe Andy will cover this. Hi, Andy, good to see you again. The original $10,500 that was approved by the council at our last council meeting, I believe it's when we did it, for $10,500, the additional $21,000 is being proposed. That's in addition to the $10.5. Is that correct?
No, the, the water was at $10.5, the sewer is at $10.5. The water is just being transferred from Baker Tilly to us. So it's the same team, we just, we just transferred firm. So, as, there should be no additional charge for water, which is agreed upon $10.5. The sewer is the new one at $10.5, which is to go along with the authority studies and results that come from the authority discussions.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So if Baker Tilly does bill us, that's going to be reduced from the amount that would essentially be, as proposed, being approved by council, correct?
Correct. I don't expect them to, but yes, correct.
So, so do we want, are you getting in front of Baker Tilly to make sure? I just don't like having outstanding potential bills coming our way. I mean, it sounds like you're not anticipating it, but that would be something I suggest we ask them to bill us if they're going to bill us.
Yeah, so what we've, go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, Andy. You're good.
So, what we've been doing is, like, everything is pretty much transferring over with the new firm. If the council is okay, and obviously decides to move forward with us and continuing on with the process, once the action is taken by council, then Ryan and I would, would send an email to Baker Tilly disengaging and requesting final invoice if there is anything.
Then, last question is a sample motion. Would we not make the motion in the addition of $10,500 because we've already approved the Baker Tilly portion, or do we want to make this so it's under Bzinski? Is that, is that the goal here?
Correct. Right, that's, that's the goal. And like I said, you know, and just to clarify too, just to make sure we're crystal clear, so there is a separate agreement with Ben Zinsky related to Andy's work on the water and sewer operations agreements separately, so we are paying him some separate cost for that, but.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just, just to point out, EPA yesterday announced a much stricter lead and copper rule across the nation. Michigan's ahead of the curve compared to most states, but it's going to accelerate the state's already very aggressive lead service line replacement program. You know, the state goes down to 12 parts per billion in January. Under the EPA rule, the limit will be 10 in 2027. And the rate of replacement has also been accelerated from 2041 deadline to replace all lead service lines to 2037 under the new EPA rule. Now, what's, what that means is, you know, it's going to be more, the timeline's more aggressive, there's going to be more work for every city in the state to do. But I would suspect, and this is why I just want to flag it for the team, that this mandate will, should come with additional federal dollars at some point. So I just, once again, to urge the team to look for grant and loan opportunities, in addition to doing the work, to being prepared though for an accelerated lead service line replacement program, which is going to affect everyone in the nation now. So, just to be prepared.
Great. Any other questions? Andy, anything from you?
No, I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Andy, all good?
Yep, good.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you joining us today. Thanks, Andy.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, if there's nothing else, then we'll move on to item 6B, which is now the proposed conservation easement for the eastern portion of the old airport property. It's on page 13 in your packet. Ryan?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, include some, some background in the memo. I trust all of you are familiar with that. Obviously, a lot of work was done last year to evaluate the airport property and, and some discussions, you know, were had at that time about, you know, opening the property up to the public and kind of formalizing some of the trails that are out there, but aren't really currently made or planned for more public use. And so, we had some discussions back in March, and ultimately, in May during workshop meetings, that the Outdoor Discovery Center had put forth a proposal, you know, based on the previous work that they had done with, with the city. That would essentially develop trails and signage, create a trailhead, create a parking area, combat invasives and restore habitat, and potentially place a conservation easement over a portion of the property. And so, the city council ultimately on May 13th approved moving forward with that proposal with the understanding that donors had come forward, and the council made that approval contingent upon actually receiving those donated dollars before we moved forward. So, since that time, the donations have been received. In fact, we've received $160,000. The donors also donated dollars towards kind of the optional overlook piece as well. And since that time, the Outdoor Discovery Center has gotten to work on that proposal. As you recall, the council approved that kind of first initial payment to the Outdoor Discovery Center as well, in the amount of $60,000. The Outdoor Discovery Center had the property surveyed, and then has put forth a proposed conservation easement for just the eastern portion of the property. And that, that general area is kind of shown in your, your meeting packet in the memo on page 14. And as you likely remember, the eastern portion of the property here is we, Jamie, maybe we'll go to page 30. The portion of this property has floodplains. If you go to the next page, we also have wetlands that we're contending with here on the eastern portion of the property. And then as we go to the next page beyond that, it kind of shows you the contour lines and shows you how steep the grade is in this portion of the property. It's kind of been described as being ravine-like, right? It's, it's very steep and really, you know, a portion of the property that would be, you know, challenging to develop anyway. As we go, and then I included some pictures actually of kind of just this area of the property, just to give you kind of a visual representation of, you know, maybe how steep the area is out there. So, the Outdoor Discovery Center has put forth this proposed conservation easement that essentially would, would place this conservation easement on the eastern portion of the property in perpetuity. And the Outdoor Discovery Center would ultimately hold that conservation easement for conservation-related activities, which is outlined in the easement, and happy to go through any of this piece by piece with you. Staff and legal counsel, we've reviewed this and proposed some redline changes to essentially have a, kind of clarify some of the forest management, forestry management pieces, to have a little bit more say if there's going to be some sort of limit of public access to the eastern portion of the property. We also modified some languages that related to, you know, having a say if the easement were to be transferred to another entity. Those are kind of the highlights. Since that time, Dave Naitre with Outdoor Discovery Center, he and his legal have reviewed this, and they have kind of a few comments on our proposed changes that, in a moment here, Mayor, maybe we can give him an opportunity to kind of outline those, so you're fully aware. I know some of the questions that have been, have come up from community members, and I think some, some council members. One was whether or not the conservation easement had to be in perpetuity, or whether the council could choose to approve it for some lesser period of time. You could, that is an option of yours to, you know, if you want to do 99 years or some other, you know, set number of years, you, you could choose to do that. One of the other kind of common questions that was coming up was whether or not this was something that, that had to go to the electorate to actually vote on. Legal counsel, you know, took a look at that and also found that that's not, this isn't something that requires a vote of the public as well. So I know that's been shared with you, but I just want to make sure and share that here today. And Mayor, if it's okay, maybe we could allow Dave to kind of talk a little bit more about, from their perspective, what they put together and any changes they might, are still looking to maybe see.
Absolutely. Yeah, Dave?
Thank you. Good to see everyone again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support in working towards this project. It's been fun. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know all about legal language, but I did just want to share a couple of the things that we were thinking about in the discussion. We, overall, all the comments you folks made to kind of secure more of Sagatuck's interests make total sense to us. And so, our, our comments just come from the logistics of how it would, you know, work in practice around some of those things. I did write some notes just so I can cover the right things here. So, a couple instances, it gives kind of city input on, you know, whether it was a land improvement that was happening, public access, the type of improvement that would be. We're supportive of all that kind of relationship back and forth. Obviously, it's why I choose to come to meetings here in person with you all. I love the partnership. What we'd want to maybe clarify in the next iteration of this is what that process looks like. As much as I do love standing in front of you folks at a study session or a council meeting, maybe there is a more formal way we could set how that input would be given, maybe at a staff level, that doesn't involve, you know, ODC staff and city staff having to prepare presentations to, to make some of those smaller choices that are outlined in that. So that would be one of the things we talk about. When it comes to public access, we are firm believers in people having access. The reason we would want to limit that, just for you folks to understand, would be around if there are areas like those banks where erosion is likely. You folks get that with doing ecosystems. If you have people not on designated areas, being able to keep them off that protects the habitat. So that's what we're looking at in those instances, or with invasive species, which may be one you'd be less familiar with. But for example, the hemlock woolly adelgid insect can, if you brush by a tree that has that on it, and then you can carry it to other parts of the property. So those are the two instances where we would be looking at limiting access. One, is it an area where, you know, could we suggest folks go to a footbridge that crosses that, or a step system, as opposed to just free up and down a bank? So we, we would just want to be able, in our efforts to conserve the property, have a decent amount ability to control that. Otherwise, it makes it really hard for us to do that type of conservation work. Let me see here what I've got. There's, in particular, in those approval settings, if you're approving the land improvements, there's a line in there that, you know, we totally trust you guys are good partners, but there's a line there added around fixing things that the city might damage. And it's two, it's a twofold line in there that includes not only the, the permission of whether it's like allowable expense in the state charter, which, or in city charter, which we're totally fine with, but then adding a layer of the council would have to approve that on top of that feels maybe not the best friendly relationship. If it's something we've all agreed to put there, and some equipment damage is something, we'd, we'd hope you'd help us fix it without having to come back and present, and then be up for a vote on that. We just think it'd be fair. Likewise, if we damaged city property, we would, you know, we'd be on the hook for that as well. And then the last one I think I've got here, so there's reference to the charter, things being permissible by the charter. I understand that intent. We'd love it from our perspective at the ODC, for you folks to do whatever due diligence you'd need to do on determining if this type of conservation easement meets the charter before you'd sign it. Instead of referring back to everything we'd be doing through the conservation easement, and whether that aligns with the charter. If there's doubt, I don't think there would be. It's a very common type of agreement. I would, I would just ask the council to maybe do that step to make sure that the things that are being outlined in it do align with what the city can do, and then not have that language be there in the easement. Because then it just creates a situation where we would have to refer back every time along those lines. We're happy to take a stab at redrafting. There is, there's costs associated with that that we asked for money for to do, so we're happy to do that. At the same time, you know, if you folks feel more comfortable having city council, other spelling council, work on that, we're comfortable with that as well. Yeah, I think that, that covers what I had to share. Thank you. We're excited.
Well, Dave is here. Questions from council?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, welcome, Dave. I don't think we met Rush Gardner in Sagatuck City Council. I was the no vote against this, just so you know, originally, but for different reasons. So today, I don't know if these questions go to Dave, or if they go to our attorney or the city, but in the agreement, the perpetuity, which is well explained here, said the easement does not grant or convey to grantee any right of ownership, possession, or use of the property except stated in the easement. The easement shall run with the land in perpetuity or until grantee terminates easement by giving grantor at least 90 days prior written notice of its selection to terminate. I don't see language that the grantor, the city, has the authority to be able to terminate at our, at our discretion.
That typically would defeat the purpose of the
Okay.
The easement. And again, I'm not a lawyer, but as our organization, we wouldn't want to do any of the work to do conservation if you could just pull back out of that. So we're saying any conservation that, up in that as well, if we're doing conservation efforts that are for our mission and our benefit, we're paying for those. So, to have that just revoked at that kind of instance wouldn't be, wouldn't be something we'd be interested in.
And is that standard for any kind of conservation? I mean, we've got conservation at Mount Balded, Old Beach, Sagatuck Harbor Natural Area. It all reads the same way to me.
I don't know that I, I could speak to that, but we do not, we would not enter into a conservation easement as an organization if that
I've been reading recently, because of the Sagatuck Harbor Natural Area, and that's pretty standard language in any of the contracts that I've seen for that.
The, the, the other question I have is, and this is just my lack of experience with conservation easements. I'm new to this.
Yeah, no.
Particular exercise here. So, it says that the grantee is Outdoor Discovery Center, ODC now, or excuse me. Help me understand why the city doesn't own the conservation easement, because we own the property. How, how is the, that, that's the part I'm kind of still not clear on. It's probably just my ignorance about how this works.
I, so again, I don't have the legal definition of it. The way I like to look at that is you, you are giving some of those property rights to our organization that we will own going forward, which would be the, the inability to develop in that area other than for conservation activities. So you're taking part of the city's ownership of that, and you're assigning that ownership to our organization.
Okay, which we don't have the authority to be able to terminate this. It's just the grantee. I do appreciate you bringing up a further conversation about responsibilities for maintenance and cost, because I just see a lot of inherent city costs here. I see some, it's pretty well laid out in terms of what ODC will take responsibility for, but I think it's a good idea to have a further conversation with the stakeholders. That would be a city manager, the Department of DPW superintendent, maybe the attorney, but, and with ODC, and talk about actually what this looks like in reality, right? What's actually are going to be responsibilities for our DPW, because that has to be baked into our cost structure, as well as our staffing, et cetera.
Outside of the easement, or?
Well, no, well, within the easement itself, but also in the park, not the park, but the airport property itself.
So at least, is my understanding of the language, were you, anything that the ODC would want to do within that easement area for our mission? So, not that we're being tasked by the city or any other stakeholder group, we would be responsible for those costs. If, if the city, for instance, wanted a second overlook in that area after we put in one that we've agreed to at your request, then that would be, you'd have to determine how to do that separately, but that wouldn't be part of this, this easement. And then as far, at least in my mind, and if there's clarification, Ryan, that you want to do with staff, the, the city's on the hook for a maintenance plan there right now, and we would not be changing, we would not, by having a conservation easement, be telling the city to do anything differently with its maintenance of that area.
Yeah, I, I just appreciate the opportunity to try to be as inclusive as possible on this process, because this is something the city has not normally entered into. So, and I just, I appreciate your experience with this and bringing that experience back to the council, in terms of next steps and discussions. Just interested to see how this plays out.
Thanks, Russ. Thanks for the conversation.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
What other conservation easements do you, do you guys manage?
Yeah.
Other than, I know where, I know where you guys are fabulous facility, by the way. I have friends that just had a wedding out there.
Oh, awesome.
Absolutely beautiful. But what other conservation areas do you guys manage besides this one that you're looking at?
So besides our main site, we actually own and manage a total of, well, we own about 900 acres. We manage a total of close to 3,000. Wow. Not all of those are in conservation easements. A significant portion are. They often would be along a river corridor similar to this. We also own them where we've had wetland remediations go in. Those come with conservation easements as well. We, I'm trying to think, I don't believe we currently have one in, in the city besides, or Sagatuck Township. Actually, we have one in Sagatuck Township right now, where this property is located, but we've not done one with the City of Sagatuck before.
Okay.
Um, as far as the conservation easement, you talked about the ravines and the beautiful creek that runs through there. I had the opportunity to go out there. It's, it's beautiful. As far as the conservation easement, like the walking trails, would you be able to, is that something that can be a part of the conservation easement, as long as it's not affecting?
Absolutely. So that's one of the things we call out. It's the conservation activities. And that's actually, I'll talk more about that. That's one of the, the references that's defined in the easement. So there's a section one actually defines what a conservation activity is, and it's that list of things, including the paths, invasive species. So all of those activities are still allowed within that easement. And we'd be saying, if it's, if it's good for our mission and we're the ones driving the force behind it, we're going to pay to do that now, where, you know, currently, you folks would be on the hook to do that type of work.
That, Mayor, that was basically my question. You know, a previous council put Talmitch Woods into con, into conservation, I believe it was in 2008. And that, you know, the Crow's Nest Trail is heavily used by walkers, and indeed, we actually included in our Mount Balded Challenge race course. So I just, thank you for that clarity. I wanted to make sure that, you know, if we go down this road, there will be public access for appropriate uses, such as what we've seen. It sounds like you're saying that that's
Absolutely. And when, even if there's an area that we do find to be extraordinarily, you know, sensitive in how you do it, your, the goal is to design the path that you would want people to take, so that it doesn't affect those areas.
Okay.
Good, go ahead, Hal.
So I know at least one person, a community resident, has been
So I know at least one person, a community resident has been raised concerns about the impact of a conservation easement on the development potential of the land should we decide to sell it? Which I, you know, I'm not a fan of the idea of selling it, but should, you know, future councils or whatever decide to do that. Is I have been doing the research on that, given that that land is not buildable, both from the, the grade of the ravine. And then also I think with the wetlands and the just sort of the ecosystem, I think it'd be near impossible, if not totally impossible for, to get the Eagle permit to do that. So it looks like land around conservation easement actually is very attractive because people love to live near beautiful space. Do you have experience with that that you can speak to?
Great question. Let me just make sure I understand. So what you, do we have experience with developments that have gone in that have also incorporated conservation?
Right.
Set several. So we've actually seen where that becomes like the central focus of a development, the natural habitat. It including increasingly as placemaking in particular. Was at the M M L conference with Ryan recently. And the cities in particular are finding the way to attract investment has a lot to do with the place that you're trying to do with that. And the, the other area that I've seen is especially when it's a P U D or some other type of a development that way. That land is still part of that calculation when it comes to any kind of density or any of those type of requirements. Obviously, I'm not a developer, but we've only seen that increase where we've done that. We've had recently, we've done a shared project like that with Habitat for Humanity around a park space that they added in. We've done that. The largest one that we did was just before I started there in 2011 or 2010. But we worked to conserve more than 100 acres of the Old Holland Country Club and then develop into condos there along where it was buildable. That was a huge success. And those, those condos have only seen huge increases in value because of that.
I don't know if we have the number on this, but with the idea of this conservation easement, how much of that property, how many acres are not part of the conservation easement? How much are we left with?
125.
Yeah, it was the 43 was conserved and so it'd be about 125 not conserved.
Okay. 125 acres that are not part of the easement, is that what we?
Something like that. Yeah, I think it said 43 would be conserved.
Okay. Go ahead, Russ.
Yeah, another question on the image that we have. So if I make sure I understand correctly, so the green shaded area is the easement.
Correct. Yeah. And that's, that colored line down the middle of the property shows what shows up on the survey.
The yellow, the yellow line?
Uh, yes, sorry. Colors are not always the best.
Yeah, the reason I'm asking is because the city uses, this is an active work site for the city. We dump trash, or not trash, excuse me. We dump brush, leaves, sometimes snow in that area. It's used by our D P W frequently for, for that purpose. And this does not restrict that use.
Correct, correct. My understanding that's all in the southwest portion of that property.
Right.
Jamie, is it possible for you to put a picture, I'm sorry, page 32 up on the screen? I think that's quite instructive with the contour lines. I don't know if you can slide, yeah. I mean, if I'm not mistaken, the sort of white, it almost looks like a white kind of river on, you know, that's bracketing it. But those are the, actually, if I'm reading the map correctly, topography, that those are the contour lines. And that gives, gives one a very good idea of how steep the slopes are that go down to that ravine.
And that's actually the line we asked the surveyors to use. So we actually do not encumber anything that is above the line of that ravine. So when you see the zigzags that are on, that's a technical term, zigzags. On the conservation easement, it is the upper line of the, that.
So you recommend easement basically goes right to the drop off to the ravine? Where the contour lines become very, very closely spaced, which indicates quite a drop in, in elevation.
And, and for us, it indicates, apart from the buildability question, what we would be looking at is that indicates where it is directly impacting the watershed there. Where our conservation value, we believe is higher.
Got it. Thank you. That's, I think that's a helpful graphic.
Dave, can you talk just a little bit, just remind us of the highlights of the, sort of the unique ecological and habitat?
You're going to test my memory. I, I love it, Holly. Yeah. One of the things that's really fascinating about that site, because it does have the topography and it hasn't been developed over a long period of time. It has very mature forests and different types of forest as you move throughout the property. The, the ecological study that you, you folks provided for there shares a lot about how the different transitions go from more deciduous trees up in the higher end to some of the coniferous hemlocks in particular along some of the ravine areas as well. There was a whole list of species, some of which are, and I'm, I'm bad at the names, but species of concern that we found on that site that you'd be able to protect as well by securing that habitat. You know, overall for us, we're genuinely interested in this because we believe this is the type of property that because it, it hasn't been developed over a long period of time, is the best type of property to conserve. Because we do a lot of restoration efforts and it is, it is hard to do that over time. So even, even we had the chance to be out with a school group earlier this year and they're working on some invasive species management in and around where we, we, we as a community have used it as the leaf and dump, which often, often actually introduces those invasive species. The work it took to just make a dent in that is way more work than it is to preserve something that's already in a good state.
Sorry to do this to you, Jamie. Can you go back, I think to 29 or 30? Yeah, around there. And that's perfect because the, the guide on the map, the legend shows some floodplain impacts. I think we're all very mindful of, of the horrors we're seeing in Ashland, North Carolina. So if you could just explain to us kind of, you know, where some of these floodplain risks are that I think would, you know, help inform folks.
Yeah. So that looks like, is that the hundred year flood level, I think is probably what that's defined as.
Okay.
And that's where that white boundary is. The, what we, what we don't like to say it, but frankly, since 2020, I think we've had three different hundred year rain events, which I'm not a math major, but that's a lot more than one every hundred years. And so we've, we've seen insurance companies and the folks that lose the most money in these instances are actually looking at the 500 year line, which is typically not what would be highlighted in most maps. They're moving more to that. Now, you know, you know, with that said, because of the topography there, it goes up 40 feet. But what, what I would be worried about as a group is where, where that water comes out. If it's flowing, you know, more is what you're protecting, what's, what's downstream of that. So if more water rushes through, that's not cared for well, and it's more hard surface, then that funnels through the end of that is where you'd be dealing with the flooding.
I just think, given what's going on with the climate and what we're seeing in the national headlines in places like Asheville, to me, this speaks volumes in terms of the desirability to conserve that. I think someone would be, would be be making a terrible mistake to try to develop that area that's so close to the floodplain.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Dave, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I do have to run, but Ryan, if I can follow up with you to just see what any homework that you want to have the O D C work on and we'll go from there.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll get together and kind of determine who was going to do the next set of, you know, red lines. And then we anticipate bringing this back to your next workshop meeting to, for, for another look at, at additional changes. And then probably about at the end of the month.
Okay, sounds great. All right, we will, thank you so much, Dave. We'll move on to item six C, the Development Due Diligence Agreement for the old landfill property. This is on page eight in your packet. Ryan.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, so the council probably recalls earlier this year, we, you know, you had a workshop about a request from the Sagatuck Township Parks and Rec Commission to consider maybe a long-term lease agreement for the, the old landfill property off of 196 for the purpose of opening them up, opening of the property up for cross-country trails. So at that, at that time, we kind of, you know, discussed some of the initial maybe due diligence that, you know, staff had done and talking with Eagle and their material management division. And the Parks and Public Works Committee took a look and ultimately made a recommendation that, that the council consider, you know, kind of moving forward with evaluating the, the request further. So at that time, council asked staff to kind of work with the township to, to evaluate the potential due diligence costs and explore some sort of cost sharing agreements. And so Daniel and I ended up having at least two or three meetings. I think we had kind of an initial proposal from the city engineer and kind of what that first step would look like and what those costs were going to be. And then ultimately the township kind of came back and, and expressed an interest in maybe also, well, one that came back with some, some title work and indicated that, hey, we own half of, you know, one parcel with you that, that involves the old landfill property. And then the other half is essentially yours, City of Sagatuck. And essentially asked if we would have any interest in potentially selling the old landfill property to them for the purpose of not just cross-country trails, but potentially, potentially some, some parks and recreation type activities. So the city attorney and I ultimately met with the township manager and their attorney to have some further discussions about that. And the township has, has put forth a due diligence agreement for the council to consider. Essentially them taking on all of that, that due diligence related costs on, on their end. Evaluating things like, you know, who operated the old landfill, you know, lines of maybe liability. Taking a look at, obviously, there's a lot of methane vents still out there. We have any methane still coming out of there. Our engineers recommended that maybe they need some overhaul and any other due diligence activities that would, you know, be needed to, to look at a park and rec and cross-country trail type use. So the township's requesting that we enter into a due diligence agreement with them. Or essentially for the next six months, they would be able to, to do their due diligence. And we in turn would be agreeing not to, you know, talk with others about, you know, either a long-term lease or selling the property. They would be conducting surveys, inspections, investigations, tests, environmental assessments, along those lines. And then at the end of that period, depending on what that, you know, their due diligence process shows, they may come back to us with either a, a long-term lease request or request, some sort of request to actually purchase the property. In the end, this agreement doesn't obligate either party to, to sell, lease or purchase the parcels. It's simply a kind of a due diligence period that we would be entering into. You know, from my perspective as, as staff and, and your city manager, right? You know, I think given the, the liabilities and limited uses associated with landfill properties and the township's interest and actually, you know, doing something with the property to make it, you know, open it up for recreational related purposes and, and, and public use. And wanting to put some, you know, dollars into that and the potential benefits that that has, I think, to the overall Sagatuck community. I think it's, it's worth at least entering into the due diligence agreement and going through that period and then going from there.
Okay. Ken, did Ken want to come up and make any comments about really what you're thinking as far as what the township is thinking and considering for that property?
Okay, let's get Kenneth Butler on behalf, behalf of Sagatuck Township Parks and Rec. About two and a half weeks ago, I met out there with a group of kids. Half the kids went to the airport property, half of them came to the dog park. And that was just after we'd had our second middle school cross-country race. They've never had them here, so this is like the second year. And this year they, they brought Hamilton over. When you bring Hamilton over, you bring in a pile more cars. And it was a tremendous success. The weather was like this, cooperated, we appreciate that. But people were parking outside the park. The people who normally bring their dogs there weren't angry. They just like, you know, we had, we had been telling a number of people this race was going to be happening. So there was no grief or aggravation there. The race went off, the, the kids loved it. So what we're looking to do is to take the landfill site, which is adjacent to our dog park and make a large trail. So our high school can have its first home meet. You have a state ranked, I think they're ranked fifth right now in the state. And you have kids who run for Sagatuck schools and win awards. And they've never had the privilege of having a home meet. They don't have a course. So this is, you know, in a large part to do something for the young men and women who run for the cross-country team to let them have a home meet. This park, this landfill was part of a joint agreement between all three communities, and that was the history. It actually closed 40 years ago this fall. And so the, the main thing, I know you did a phase one on it. And the recommendation was you can use it to walk on. But because there are nine inches of sand, 15 inches of clay, and then another four inches of, of sand, that is the cap on top of everything, you can't disturb that, which means you cannot build anything on this site. The other small detail is that it happens to have its, its southern neighbor, Cal Lake. So I don't know that property next to water and sewer plants is especially valuable if you were to try to develop any part of it. And it's also next to the freeway. So it does get a little loud when the trucks go by, it won't hurt the cross-country part of it. But it's, it was an EPA superfund site. They closed it out. They thought, I'd lost my mind when I asked them for information about it. The young lady in Chicago said, do you know how long ago we closed that? I said, tell me more. Longer is better. So anyways, we're looking, we, we have worked with the schools. We're taking possession of two soccer goals that we're going to put over at River Bluff Park. Working with the schools, they paid for one goal. We're, we're picking up the cost for the other one. And we're looking at working at, towards putting all three communities working together. Cause if we work together, we can accomplish so much more than if we're competing with each other. So we'd like to take a look at the property. Main thing is I want to have an engineering firm test the methane vents to see if there's anything coming out. Because if there is something coming out, why haven't we been testing it for the last 20 years? Eagle has no records of any testing. The EPA has no records. So we're hoping that when this was closed, that the city and the township 40 years ago, tested it for a number of years, found nothing came, coming out and stopped testing because there was nothing venting out. But as Ryan indicated, this is part of the due diligence. Let's just make sure. So that's what we're looking to do. We'll pay for it. We'll disclose the results and hopefully we will have a proposed course designed to present to you also, so you could see what it would look like. So if you have any other questions, let me know.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you for all your work, Ken. And, but I wanted to say the River Bluff, those, those goalies are already up. I saw them there yesterday.
Okay, good.
I thought that was kind of cool to see that, to see.
Well, it was just, it's an empty field and the schools need more places to, you know, they're, they're running our Parks and Rec programs. And so now you've got a place where if you've got a team that wants to practice, because their, their main park in Douglas gets very, very busy. So this is an additional place where the kids were all, we've got, we did the swings two years ago. And the chairman and I are going to be schlepping to picnic tables over there and putting those together. So we'll, we'll have those over there also.
That's great. I'm really excited to see something happen for our award-winning cross-country team. You know, we've had a lot of kids that have gone on to get scholarships in major universities because we have incredible cross-country runners in this town. And nice to have a home meet someday. It would be really great to see that. So anyone else? Yeah.
And then also, you know, we've had, we've had a number one team here, remember, not that long ago. I remember when they paraded through town, you know, several of those kids used to work for me at the store. And really enjoyed that. While we're talking about River Bluff Park, have you guys thought, are you working on replacing the, the historical plaque that, that was there? I know it had some.
It was damaged.
Damage.
And then we contacted the county.
Cause I really liked that when, when it was.
The county is working on a new set of plaques to go through. So whenever they come up with it, we're putting up some new signage at River Bluff with a trail map. Not that you Not that you can really get lost at River Bluff, but people have said they 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 like the maps. And O D C did a set of maps for us, so we'll be putting those up. And if the county ever comes back and gives us something new, we'd be glad to put it up.
But I I really like those historical plaque, the one that was there when it was legible. And I just, I don't know, maybe you might want to, I don't know if you guys have already, but you might want to reach out to Sally Winters, who works with the historical, who've done the Sagatuck plaques. They do a wonderful job around town, and and you might want to.
See, once again, we, it's a lot easier if we work together.
Correct, yeah.
That's great. Well, thank you so much. Appreciate all your work. And then next steps with this.
Yes, we'll have this. Daniel DeFranco's already indicated that these red line changes are fine. They're agreeable to them. So your next regular meeting, we'll have this on for a vote.
Okay, sounds great. All right, we will move on then to public comment on anything you wish to speak on. If anyone in the audience wishes to speak, feel free to come on up to the podium.
My name is Chris Peterson, seven forty-two, Saga Talk. I apologize for wasting your time when I was trying to get my volume up. I'm glad that there's going to be more opportunity for for this. The questions that I had, many of them were answered today. That was just amazing. And my understanding is is that the conservation easement is pretty much a done deal. So now the next discussions will be what the limiting access means, a little more clarification on that, costs to the to the different times. The only thing I would suggest doing is the the article that was in the paper that originally said there were no strings attached to conservation easement, there are. And I think if, I'm not trying to drum up business for Scott Sullivan, but maybe a big article explaining what it is, what a conservation easement is. So many people don't even know that we have airport property, let alone what the conservation easement is. And I always feel if you're going to negotiate away public land from the owners, which basically the O D C said this has to happen, make this go through, I think people need to be made aware of it over and over again, so it finally sinks in. Again, your questions were wonderful today, and that young man did a great job. Thank you.
All right, Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? All right, anyone online wish to speak? Okay, all right. Correspondents, I don't see anything for the workshop. Council comments for this workshop. We can start with Holly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great meeting, great discussion. I want to thank my sister Paula for joining as a observer today. So she inspired me with her public services as an AmeriCorps volunteer a few years ago. So anyway.
Fantastic. Russ?
Hey, just one question. The sign thing got me thinking. Someone asked me the other day of the status of the Sagatuck sign at the Y. That's also known as the North Side sign that got wiped out this summer.
You're talking about Holland Blue Star.
Yes.
That's the Y they're referring to.
Commonly referred to as the Y, if you haven't.
Yeah, so. As you recall, I mean, the the last conversation that that, you know, we had with the council was a kind of a workshop to discuss, you know, do you want it immediately replaced with, you know, something similar? Or do you want to kind of have a larger discussion about branding and signage and kind of maybe work through that process? And I think the discussion was to kind of at least evaluate branding and signage on a greater scale. It's just not there yet on the, you know, the worklist. But I know that the township has at least, you know, made some improvements at that intersection. It's in the township. And, you know, like, so they kind of cut some some trees and pushed back some or took care of some some bushes that were kind of overgrown, at least kind of make that look a little bit better at that intersection. But so to be continued. I don't have a huge update for you.
Yeah, just a lot of gratitude for, you know, David coming out and helping us with the airport property. Excited to see those things take place. Excited to have some places for our cross-country team to run. I'm just, it's a good day. Very happy. Thank you.
Good. Scott?
Nothing tonight.
All right, Gregory.
Lots of answers and clarification about the airport property. Of course, I second that when you made that motion, Holly. I I'm glad, I'm glad to see that come into fruition. Maybe maybe we can put the merry-go-round there. Where we find a place for it. But while I have the mic, I just want to let everybody know, I know a lot of people don't want to hear that word, Christmas. But the the Sagatuck Village Players will hold an open auditions for the two thousand and twenty-four production of Charles Dickens' A Christmas Carol. And initial auditions will be held at six P M. Tuesday, October fifteenth and Thursday, October seventeenth. Callbacks will take place the following week. We're looking for children and adults to fill the various roles of Dickens' delightful story. You all know Steve Wiliford makes a wonderful Scrooge, and he will be directing again this year. If you or anyone you know, your family, would like to audition, we really have a great time with it every year. Send an email to sagatuckchristmescarol@gmail.com. Just reach out to me or anybody. Walk out on Butler Street and say, I want to be in the Christmas Carol, and somebody will snag you.
Fantastic. All right, for the workshop, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All right, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.